All right, I'll call to order the June 16th, 2021 meeting.
Recording in progress.
Of Norberth Borough Council. And Ms. Bryant, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Vice President Weisberg.
I'm here.
Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Councilmember Elshops.
Here.
Councilmember McGreevy.
Here.
Councilmember Pennanopoulos. Councilmember Rickards.
Here.
President Mutarek.
Here.
Mayor Deutsch.
Here.
Okay, great. Ms. Bryant, given that this is, I think, the first business meeting, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States
of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have limited comments tonight. Really just priming everyone at this meeting and the members of the public for our return to in-person meetings, which will happen at our first meeting in July, which is also a consolidated meeting as we move into our summer schedule of having only one meeting for the month of July, August, and September. And I know later on Ms. Bryant will update us on her plans to reopen the Borough building to members of the public and return some sense of normalcy to that public space. Ms. Mayor, do you have any comments this evening?
Just brief ones. I'd like to remind everybody that we will be going back to enforcement of the two-hour parking zones as of July 6th, now that there's no longer a state of emergency in the Borough and people are starting to get back to their usual commuting patterns. We wanted to give everyone just a little bit of time to get the heads up. And remember, if you've moved to a new area with a two-hour parking zone, you have time to go in and get a parking sticker. If you still have your old parking sticker, that's still good for where you live, so you don't have to get a new one if you already have one. And I just wanted to remind people to get their stickers in order for commencement of July 6th enforcement. Next, I'd like to just give a big thank you to Officers Matt Belfi and Officer Matt Belfi and Bill Henderson, who helped this weekend with an incident where a piece of the bridge fell off onto the tracks and created a hazard. And I want to thank those two for keeping everyone safe until it could be inspected and make sure that nobody was injured in the process. And we really appreciate your efforts. And other than that, that's it.
Okay. And I know this will come up under information items, but there may be members of the public who don't watch that long. So I will remind you that we do have an open house, an opportunity to meet your council members and mayor this Friday at Narberth Park from 3:00 to 5:00. Next week is our rain date, but it looks like the weather is going to cooperate. So I look forward to seeing you there. Feel it'll be really a great opportunity to see each other in person. And feel free to bring all of your questions and concerns and issues that may have been brewing and waiting for an in-person opportunity for the past 15 months. Friday is your day, and we look forward to that. We'll now move to the section of the meeting for public comment. And I will just call the names I see here and ask if you would like to make a comment. If you do, please state your full name and your address for the record. And there will be a three-minute limit, starting with Mr. Spear. I'm guessing no. Because he is doing the recording. Maureen McGeehan. Guessing no, she's probably here to talk about historic preservation. And Ms. Aplinup is also here for preservation. Mr. Callan, do you have any comments this evening?
No comment.
Mr. Winston.
No comment.
And Cal Marie Scanlon.
Yes, I do have a comment about the historic preservation. I am very, very concerned that there's the thought of advertising the proposed ordinance that is before public notification and before public meetings. Last week it was said, or two weeks ago it was said there's going to be one public meeting and then the vote in July with it being advertised, vote for advertising this meeting. This, to me, that's very concerning. I sent an email to all council members and Solicitor Walco that I'd like to have entered in public record. Shall I read it or shall it just be entered into public record?
I will make sure that it is entered into the record.
All right. And I'm also very concerned that the ordinance was posted after 1:00 PM yesterday. And that short time period before today's meeting and the vote council has for advertisement does not give adequate time for the public to review or comment on the proposal. This particular historic proposal affects 99% of the residents of the Borough. And it seems that shoving it through, this is what the council is doing. And if you're going to advertise it before public meetings and before comment, that means to, it seems that you really don't care what the public has to say. Because if there are changes that are made by the public's phenomenal idea, then you have to re-advertise it, wasting our money. So a public meeting should occur, several public meetings should occur before this is advertised, saving us Borough money and just being more efficient. So that's the comment that I have. And when the Borough is the July meeting, is it a combined July, August, and September meeting?
No, there's one meeting in July, one meeting in August, and one meeting in September.
And one meeting in September. Because again, it seems that this is with the summer vacations coming, it seems that just shoving it right through is not a good idea for the Borough, for the long term of the Borough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that will close public comment. We'll move to 6C. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from Finance and Administration?
Sure. I move to approve the minutes of the May 5th and May 19th meetings of Borough Council.
Seconded by Counselor Weisberg, all in favor? Assuming there's no discussion. No discussion. Schedule of Bills?
I move to approve the schedule of bills for the General Sewer Solid Waste Capital and Highway Aid Funds.
Seconded. Also Counselor Weisberg, any discussion? All in favor? Appears unanimous. 6C, Sabine Avenue.
I move to accept the grant of an extension for 32 Sabine Avenue Plan Approval to July 31st, 2021.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor? All right. Motion is approved. 6D. I think that goes to you, Mr. Bush.
I move that Borough Council advertise bid for repair of stormwater facilities and sidewalk along Haverford Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McGreevy. Ms. Bryant, could you just give us a little detail on this?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Actually, I'd like to delegate that to the Borough Engineer, given how long I've been with the Borough and his familiarity with the project. And I'm really grateful, thank you, Eric, for joining us tonight.
Mr. Johnson, thanks for joining us. Go ahead.
Yes, so I believe most of you should, at least be sort of familiar with this project. It was, it is budgeted, it is a budgeted project. It's pretty straightforward. We have a stretch of storm sewer that extends along Haverford Avenue from the intersection at Wynwood to the Culvert that has failed. The project is going to involve essentially just abandoning the failed section of pipe and replacing with a new storm sewer pipe that outfalls into the creek. That will help drain away water from the intersection. And as part of the project, since we already have a contract there and the Borough had budgeted money for sidewalk improvements around their facilities, we will also be doing some sidewalk repair along the park frontage as part of that contract. So it's a pretty straightforward project. And we're just looking to get the advertiser bids and then we will be posting the bids to contractors available on the Pet Bid Service.
Any questions from council members? Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I had, after looking at the final project, so I talked about this with Eric, but they're going to be pulling up some stuff right near the old scoreboard in the park. And we have a longstanding request from the Parks and Rec Board to remove that scoreboard. So I think we talked about adding that as a, I forget the term, an optional item or a...
Add alternate.
Yeah, add alternate to remove the scoreboard and see if that makes sense financially as well.
Right, and that's something that could be integrated, if you so choose, pretty easily into the contract. It won't really change much of the plan's respects. Essentially demolition by a contractor already 10 feet away.
Well, is there a consensus from, is there any reason that we would not include that as an add alternate, where we will get the information about what that will cost us? Hearing none, why don't we, why don't we add that?
Okay, we will do that.
Great. All right, all in favor of advertising this bid? All right. Any opposed? Hearing none. Move to 6E.
I move to advertise the ordinance for a creation of a historic district.
Seconded.
Seconded. And there is text which council members have had a chance to review. And Mr. Walco has given us a number of options. So I'm going to give him the floor to lay out sort of where this stands and where it could go this evening as part of the discussion that we're going to have right now.
Thank you, President Mutarek, the evening council. Yes, on Friday, I circulated two versions of this ordinance. One version was essentially, the ordinance has received from the planning commissions with some slight corrections to, I wouldn't say corrections, but proposals for dates that would seem to be more in line with council's meeting schedule. But nothing really of a substantive change. That was the first version. The second version I provided was more of a substantive changes with certain notes and comments, definition issues, proposals related to the process of how one would file an application, how it would eventually come before council. And a couple, at that point in time, left open questions for review. At that time, after that time, I did get some feedback from council. I did get a chance to discuss some of those notes and questions with Mr. Bressi. And after that, I did circulate, I believe yesterday, a more refined version, taking out a lot of those notes and issues that were either resolved by my discussions with Mr. Bressi and I'm no longer concerned with, or otherwise, Mr. Bressi didn't seem to have any concerns with what I had presented. Mr. Bressi did circulate to staff an ordinance that seemed to narrow down on the last few issues that I would like to bring to council's attention to see how they would like to move forward. What we would need to do today if council wants to advertise this ordinance is to get it in the substantive form with no other substantive changes after tonight. We can discuss some of these issues that I presented, but certainly council should be able to talk as a group. And I see Mr. Bressi here and ask questions with him or the other historic experts that are at this meeting regarding the process. My overall attention to this ordinance was sort of trying to look at practical aspects that this ordinance would have on Borough staff, Borough budgets, and essentially how it would come before council. Would it come for council two times, just one time, if at all? If that's not my decision to make, that's council's decision. And I wanted to make sure what council would like to see happen. I believe there is also a need for council to make this. If council hasn't decided already on the appropriate map to use. It's my understanding that there is a 1969 proposal for a district map. And there's also a 1945 historic district map. Certainly, we can plug in whichever map would you like to have advertised and along with the attachment of that map. And that would not be an issue to make that choice, but that does need to be made tonight. I think the issues that Mr. Bressi and I have discussed and with the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission, the remaining issues that I see, one deals with the administrative review provision, which I'd like to get some feedback from council on. And we'll address that one first. For administrative review, this would be if there were those alterations that are in the ordinance with the ability to have the Borough Code Inspector or whoever that may be under this ordinance give that approval without the need or I would say, without the ability then thereafter for you have the Harb or for council to overrule that building inspector. And these would be hopefully minor technical items that the building inspector feels comfortable saying this meets the Harb ordinance. This meets, you know, code approves it. Now, that approval, one of the questions I initially had, that approval does need to come before council initially to sign off on. So I will be making additional changes to the definition of appropriateness to say it has to come before council. We do need to put in the ordinance that it's only council who can give that approval. I had a question as to whether or not council wanted that to go to the Harb for further comment before it went to council. My concern is that, one, at this point, it's been approved. It seems like it could set up the idea of whether or not it could be second-guessed or creating conflict between staff and a recommending body, which the recommending body could do nothing to address. Or whether it should go directly to council, which could even be on a consent agenda at that point. I'm not sure what council wants to do. Obviously, the Harb is there, will be there for providing advice and being involved in the process. But again, at this point, there's not much they can do. So why have the extra meeting for the applicant to go through that process? Why can't it just go to council? Again, that is the initial question that I would have to see what you'd like to have on that. I would like to add some language just to make it clear that council would not be able to make that change. Would already be approved at that point in time. So my initial question is, why doesn't it need to go to council? But again, we're doing a system where everything has to be approved by council. So that's my first question. I think that's an issue. Todd, did you have any questions on that to pipe in before we move to the next one?
I don't have any questions, but I have...
Or any issues, discussions, points?
I have some comments about that. If it's appropriate, I could bring them up now or I could bring them up during discussion, whichever you prefer.
Let me ask council, would you like to go through these one by one in detail or would you prefer to summarize them and then we cycle back to talking about them? Because we can kind of make a difference in how we end up here.
Yeah, I think I only have one more other issue that at this point that we're...
All right, tell us the one more other issue and then we'll go to, we'll sort of comment. I'd like to, following that, I'd like to over-review the timeline again because I think that will also help clarify the decision-making process and then we'll go to comments and questions.
And my only other issue would be for council, whether, and it's not a hard burden, but the way that the ordinance was drafted is that if there is a finding of demolition by neglect, whether or not council would like that finding to be transmitted to council or to the Harb. So again, this would be almost like if there is a property maintenance violation. Do you want to hear about every property maintenance violation that is issued in the Borough? Do you want to find out every time there is an issue with one of these properties? Not that there is an application, not that doing anything with it. Certainly, council may want to know about that because they want to know what's going on in the Borough. I'm not too sure of the extent of these findings will occur. If you'd like to hear about it, great. It's just not something that I think council generally gets administratively. And again, it would be the more administrative work for the code official to make that transmission to both the Harb and Borough Council when those findings are made. Those are the two, I think, feedback items of questions that I had outstanding. Certainly, if council disagrees with any of the matters that I've sort of rearranged or proposed. One of the major issues that I've changed was removing the need for to file essentially an appeal in order for an economic hardship to be filed. The way it was originally drafted was you would go, you know, you'd go to the Harb, you'd go to council. If it was denied by both, then they could go back again, go to Harb, claim a hardship, go to council, claim a hardship, and then, you know, could follow the appeal rights. I didn't see a reason why they couldn't just claim the economic hardship if that's what they're going to claim, what they want to bring up on the initial go-around. And why wait for that additional review and time periods? Because again, this is all administrative work for the Borough. It's matters on your agenda as council that you would have to address. And I would think that if council wanted to address it, they could address it one time.
Thank you, John. So hold those thoughts in your mind and we'll talk about, we have an opportunity tonight to come to decision on these issues. And assuming that we do, we could vote to advertise this ordinance. That will put it out, that will put out exactly the language that we are proposing to the community. And then there will be three Planning Commission meetings between now and our next council meeting. And one of those meetings could be reserved for comment and public involvement, our involvement, you know, on this issue. We can get a sense from the community. It's very important, I think, that we know that community members are aware that this is happening, especially given the oddity of us doing this on Zoom rather than in a public room. In some ways, it's more accessible, in other ways, less. Ms. Bryant has offered the opportunity to mail to every property owner in the Borough. And we can send them a FAQ, which I know Mr. Bressi can discuss. And we can also include details about the meeting, which will be in person as well as, you know, you could zoom in and watch or you could submit your comments ahead of time. So that we as council, when we meet in July with the opportunity to adopt this ordinance and then send it to the Museum and Historical Commission in Pennsylvania for review, will have a really clear sense of where the community stands on this issue. And then at the July meeting, we will be able to have that discussion sort of on the merits of what we have put together rather than flying blind. That is my proposal. And so with that, now I will hand it over to Todd, who has lots of comments on some of these details. And then we will get back to council member questions.
Thank you, President Mutarek. The first thing I'd like to say is no matter what you think about this ordinance or any provision of it, it has been developed through a great collegial effort, not just the Planning Commission, but our consultants, Chloe Moore from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, Kathleen Ablenout from the Lower American Servancy, Corey Kegaresi, who's not a consultant but has been giving us almost daily advice to answer questions that come from council members and our team, and of course, Mr. Walco. And I would like to say that this has been, again, very collegial and productive. And we are working very well as a team on this. And I thank everyone who's here and has been involved in that for their efforts. Mr. Walco did note, as a result of his questions based, that he circulated with the draft to you, we did have some further input from the state as to his questions. And I did send him some additional comments this morning or afternoon. I'd like to make sure he's had a chance to consider those before this text is finalized. In terms of his two questions, in terms of administrative review, the state Historic Preservation Official, who is very familiar with this, as he's helped us write it, says this will probably not come up very much given the nature of our preservation ordinance that's being proposed. This tends to be used in communities that have much more complex regulatory arrangements and applied to minor architectural changes like colors and windows and things like that that can be easily described in an objective way. He didn't think there would be perhaps nothing in our code that could go to staff review. On the other hand, he did recommend that we retain the pass-through of the staff's approval of a C of A to the Harb and to the council so that everyone is informed. He thinks it's valuable for the Harb to be able to track what is happening and evaluate what's happening. And if they think that things are not going according to their expectations, they can propose to council modifications in the process. So it's not so much to send it to the Harb so they can second-guess that particular case, but that they can be informed in their work in advising council on this aspect of Borough policies. That would be the argument he would make. And I think that was in the draft that the Planning Commission recommended. And I think we would respectfully stand by that recommendation given Mr. Kegares' explanation of it. In terms of demolition by neglect, the Planning Commission did recommend that council be informed of those things primarily for the reasons that Mr. Walco noted. It's good for council to be informed and know what's going on, particularly at the beginning stages of the implementation of this ordinance so you can assess whether it's working to your expectations also. But I don't think this is as important an issue. The last thing I'll say, President Mutarek, is yes, we do have three Planning Commission schedule. We did schedule an extra one in anticipation that council would ask us to have a special meeting about the historic district ordinance. We would be pleased to do that at your request.
Maybe the first issue to discuss, why don't we work through these first two? And then there seems to be a council discussion about, you know, the date that we choose and the map that we choose. Council members, are there other issues? Trying to put together a task list here so we can stay focused on decision-making. Yes, Mona?
So I was looking at the, comparing this to the June draft and I didn't notice any changes or additions to the definition of removal. And I'm still concerned that for items seven through 12 under Section 7 of Certificates of Appropriateness, I'm concerned that that removing something could be interpreted as taking down something for a porch and replacing it with a different material. And I'm concerned that could lead to excessive government regulation in addition to excessive time and money spent for Borough resources looking at those kind of issues for front porches. So I just want to clarify, was there anything added or revised that clarifies that removing like structures is not the same thing as replacing them with different materials? That's my question.
Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you.
To see, because your answer will define whether this goes on the list of to-dos or not.
Council member, we discussed your comments at the last council meeting extensively. We do, we do have additional language in there to address the concern that you raised. Hopefully, my pagination is the same as yours. It's on page 14 and is Section 7E, Item 2, where we added a provision, if you'd like, I can read it. In instances of material, okay, I'll start. In instances where materials and details from the period, excuse me, let me back up. If the alteration involves the removal of a feature in subsection D 5 through D 10 above, the alteration shall not require a certificate of appropriateness if the feature is replaced with a similar feature that is similar to and in character with the contributing resources and meets one of the following criteria. The feature is replaced in kind with the identical material and detailing or in instances where materials and details from the period of historical significance are either unavailable or their use is economically infeasible, the feature may be replaced with a new material that matches the material being replaced in composition, design, texture, and other qualities aesthetically consistent with, even if not completely duplicative of, the character of the historic feature. So council member, that was our response to your comment. I'm happy to discuss that further, but I'm hopeful that that meets your concerns.
So Mona, my question is, would you like to keep this on the list of to-dos? Because we'll get into the details on it or is that satisfactory to your concern?
No, thank you. I had missed that because it wasn't highlighted in pink. So I didn't notice that that was new. So thank you. You can take it off the list of to-dos. And again, thank you to everybody for all your hard work.
Thank you. Any council members, any other to-dos? Mr. Bush?
Yeah, so a question I have, just looking through the draft again. There, there's an opportunity to categorize things that aren't buildings as contributing resources. Buildings, sites, structures, objects, open spaces. Buildings, sites, structures, objects, open spaces. Do you have any plans on categorizing anything that's not a building as a contributing resource? Uh, folks who are drawing, uh, who are going to be drawing the individual maps.
Mr. President, is that a question I can respond to?
Yes, please.
Uh, council member, um, at the moment, um, uh, the, the planning commission is finalizing the list of contributing resources. That's not necessary to be part of the ordinance. Uh, it does need to be approved by council, but not as part of the ordinance. At the moment, it is not our intention to, um, to list any open spaces as, uh, contributing resources. Uh, the reason, and, and secondly, even if they were, um, um, listed as contributing resources. Um, there are only 12 actions that fall under the purview of this ordinance. Um, and all of them involve essentially, uh, the modification of, of buildings. Primarily the removal of aspects of buildings. So even if an open space were considered a contributing resources, which at this point we do not intend. Um, open spaces by their nature would not fall under the regulations that are being proposed in this ordinance.
Well, de- demolition in general falls under the ordinance, even if it's not, you know, a specific modification of a building. So, I mean, I, I guess you can't really demolish an open space, but certainly an object or some other. You know, smaller thing could be demolished. So I'm just wondering if you anticipate going to that granular level, or if you're just going to stick with buildings.
Um, demolition, council members defined in the code as the act of dismantling, tearing down, moving or removing any exterior load bearing. Load bearing portion of a building or structure. Not include is the removal of exterior non-structural architectural, uh, architectural elements. So, and again, this only applies to things that are designated as contributing resources.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory for?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's relevant. Okay.
Okay. Council members, any other concerns? Mr. McGreevy.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify my understanding. So on page 16, I see that guidelines for alterations. Will be developed at a future date and approved by council. And that's where sustainability concerns would figure into the process. Is that, is, is that correct? Like there's nothing more that needs to be done at this stage to consider sustainability?
Mr. President, I, may I respond to that question?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Um, council member, um, there, there is another, um, there's another reference to sustainability. Uh, in this process, um, uh, which, um, was, um. Inserted a while back, uh, because of the conversations that we've had with council about this topic. Um, and I'm hastily trying to, um. Uh, skim through here, but in the section which, um, which, um, describes the, uh, criteria. By which a, uh, it's section eight, review criteria and guidelines. Alterations, um, which is B, alterations. Uh, in considering whether to issue a certificate appropriateness for the alterations to a contributing resource when required. Mr. Bush, that would, that would be part of the controlling factor in terms of open spaces as well. But anyway, a contributing resource when required under seven D. The Harb and Borough Council shall consider. There's a list of things to consider, and then we have specifically called out. In addition, the Harb and Borough Council shall consider the benefits of the effects of the proposed alterations on the energy efficiency of the structure. So that is placed in there so that the Harb and Council can explicitly take into account the benefits of the change that's being proposed. Be, be in terms of sustainability or energy efficiency. So that actually, that, that becomes active right away. Um, the guidelines, um, that you referred to, um, at the moment, um, would, um. And so I'm here. Let's see, what section was that again? I'm sorry.
I think page 16. Yeah, under C.
Right. Um, yeah, C, guidelines, uh, for alterations. Um, so those would be, um, um, developed, uh, later. And those would provide further guidance to somebody who wants to make either. An alteration that is, uh, regulated above or a, um. Um, an alteration that comes under the advisory review process. So that, that would come later.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. So now we have our working list. Counsel, how do you feel about the, uh, opportunity for the staff? To, um, approve or, uh, you know, tech, minor technical issues without them coming to council. Although Mr. Bressi advises it would be very rare that that would happen, but it would preserve the ability for them to exercise that right and. Save work from council. Did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Bressi?
Mr. Muterick, it would still come to council, it, it just wouldn't have to go to Harb. Um, for review and recommendation. And then it's, uh, there wouldn't be a need for discussion. But, but there would, it would, and at the council level, I see those almost a consent agenda item where there's no need for a, a discussion. Because there's really no reason to discuss it, but it would still need to be.
So, um, assuming that we are, uh, you know, agreeable to implement that change, are you opposed?
Okay.
All right.
Are we, I'm sorry, I, I think I lost sight of, are, are we talking about now for the administrative review process? Would go to council and be sort of on some sort of consent agenda. But I thought I heard Todd saying that the recommendation of, maybe it was Corey, I don't know, was that it would go to the Harb. But I wanted to make sure I was clear on that. What, cause it sounded like he was saying that's just sort of as a good practice, go to the Harbs that they're informed. Which is different from putting it on the Harbs agenda for their review and approval. Um, I would prefer not to have it do both go to Harb for review and approval and to council, because that will really delay it. So if we're just talking about an administratively approved certificate going to, just sort of getting on the next council agenda for, uh, like at a consent agenda. And, and sort of in a parallel path, it goes to the Harb just to inform them. That makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about a double review after the approval.
I, I believe the language that what was proposed said, uh, that, that a list provided for the recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd. Um, I, I, I believe that there should be a list provided to Harb just so they're, they're kept in the loop. But I don't believe there needs to be a discussion on that because what's the purpose of that discussion? Except to second, again, I use this word second guess, and I don't mean that in a, uh, director way to the, to the, to the eventual Harb. But I could see the potential for conflict. When, when, when there is a recommendation for something you can't change anyways. Yeah, that would be.
Also, it's just, it's just the delay that would put in place, because it would be, you'd got, the idea is to make it like an expedient process, get administrative approval. And then if you had to go to the Harb and then that would have to go to the council, it would be, that would seem excessive. So I wanted to make sure we were not talking about doing that.
All right, well, here, what the language said, um, Mr. Walker, I, I believe the way council members characterizing it. Would be agreeable, uh, that this is sent for informational purposes to the Harb so they can monitor what's happening. But they don't have a role in reviewing. Uh, and for substantive reasons, what they, we're second guessing the staff.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's an appropriate process, uh, as Janop was said for. E D and C, but it also keeps the Harb involved.
Yes.
And, and it doesn't create that conflict. I'm concerned.
Okay, so it seems, it seems like there is a general consensus in this discussion that we are comfortable with that. Um, next question is, um. Demolition by, uh, neglect. How does council, does council have any comments or questions? Mr. Bressi, you didn't offer a comment on demolition by neglect. Would you like to?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, um, this is merely a question of whether council should be informed when the, uh, building official issues a finding of demolition, uh, by neglect. Um, this is your, this is just for informational purposes. It's not issued because council has to take any action in that regard. My, uh, I think in the planning commission's opinion is that council should be informed. Um, also because that helps council monitor the application, the implementation of, of this ordinance. Compliance with this ordinance, which is important to its role in determining whether, you know, the ordinance is working or needs to be adjusted in any way. As well as, you know, in, in, in understanding in, in general, just what's happening with properties in the borough.
Are there any council members who feel strongly that we should not be informed? Feel weekly, we should not be informed. Okay, we're going to include that.
Every day.
And now we get to, um, the discussion of what is the date that defines the, um, historically protected properties? Mr. Bressi, do you have, uh, the 1945 map? That we can compare with the 1970 map here as a group and for the benefit of the public?
Um, I, I do, it will take me just a moment.
Sure, that's no problem.
But I can, I can do that if you just.
Mr. Bressi has been made co-host so that he can share his screen.
And now I have to be careful, right?
You do.
So what I'm going to do is call up the letter that I read to council, which I think, no, it doesn't. I have to call those files up directly.
It's fine, take your time.
I'm going to pull them together into one, so it's easier to go back and forth. Okay, so are you all seeing a map now?
We are.
Okay, are you seeing anything else on my screen or just the map?
Just, um, just the PDF and the map.
Okay, great. So, um, this is the, uh, proposed historic district through 1945. So you see, it's hard to see, I can. I don't know how to make it smaller. You can see all of South Narberth is in, is included.
That's perfect, just like that.
And the, uh, areas that are excluded, there's some areas along, um, Montgomery Avenue. Uh, and some areas along Wynwood Avenue, the more newly developed areas. And as well as, uh, um, Hanson Court up off, uh, Montgomery Avenue. Um, I should note, um. Wi- within this district, the map that we are still finalizing will, there are obviously buildings that were built after 1945 within this area. Those will be, uh, identified as non-contributing resources. And they would not fall under the purview of this, uh, historic district ordinance. So functionally, it's almost the same as being mapped out of the ordinance, but you cannot draw a map that has holes in it. So there will be other buildings excluded from this, uh, from the historic district by virtue of.
You cannot draw a map with a, with a, with a puncture in the map?
That is the advice that we are given by the state's historic preservation officer who, who, you know, is, whose office has to approve this, so.
Is there some opportunity, and maybe I'm, I'm deep diving here. To color code those items, because I can absolutely see as a homeowner, I go, I look at the map. I see, I see, for example, the two set, two twins that were built near the Krensky Tennis School. Um, right, they were built a few years ago, they're included on the map, I'm going to be confused. Um, is there some way visually that we can indicate it, even if we can't punch out holes?
Um, we are still working on that map.
Okay. And I know that we're not approving the map, yeah.
Pardon me?
I know we're not approving the map tonight, but.
Oh, you are approving it to be advertised.
That, okay. We're approving the, the year to be advertised, but.
Right, which would include this map. But what you're not approving tonight is which properties within that map are contributing or non-contributing.
Understood.
Still trying to follow that. I mean, I can, I can show you a work in progress. I cannot guarantee that it's a hundred percent accurate, because we're, we've learned we have to verify things from different records.
Sure.
It's accurate and we.
Well, let me ask council members, is that something that, um, someone would like to see? I don't want to over complicate with too much information here. Um, or you think you get the gist of it? I think they get the gist of it.
Okay.
So let's. Right, you've started to identify individual properties. Okay, so that's the 1969 map.
This, this, the top one now, uh, I believe you are looking at a map. This, this one you're looking at now is 1969. Um, you can see more of the, uh, areas are filled in. Um, most, uh, most notably, um, gosh, now I have to stare at it. The area just, I forget the name of the street, just north of, uh, of Windsor Avenue, is that Narwin?
Narwin Lane?
Yeah, this, this, the area just north of Windsor, the cul-de-sac, that area is now included, uh, in, in the district. That's one of the major areas. The Sabine Avenue, uh, school and is, is included in the 1961 map, as is Borough Hall. Uh, which.
Country Lane.
Sorry, Country Lane, I apologize. You know, when we get away from the logic of the A, B, C streets, I have trouble keeping them, keeping them in my head. So anyway, that, those are some of the major, the major differences, mostly more of the areas along Wynwood. Wynwood Avenue get, get filled in, Borough Hall, Sabine Avenue get, get filled in. And there are fewer buildings which are, uh, within the district which are non-contributing.
May I ask when, uh, Hanson Court would be filled in if they, if, how would that be included? When, 1970?
Uh, I do not know offhand, um, there may be someone else in the meeting, Dave Brower might know if you would. If he's in the meeting, would you like him to respond?
Sure.
Dave, are you in the meeting?
Yes, I, I am here.
Do you know the answer to that question?
Okay, uh, Andrea, you were, you were asking about, uh, Hanson's.
Hanson Court, I actually remember when it was built, so I, I was alive.
Well, certainly after 1969, I, I, uh, and, uh. Kathleen, uh, Alblinout may know better than I, but I, I think it was, it was around 1980 plus or minus.
Yeah. I, I remember that, okay.
So council members, um. I'm just going to put out on the table, um. The idea that we adopt the map labeled proposed historic district through 1945. Are any council members opposed to adopting that map or would like further discussion on this? Mr. Bush? I can't see all your hands, because we're sharing screens, so. Start with Mr. Bush.
I, I, I like 1945 as the date. I didn't realize that we were going to be also approving the, all the colored in sections, because, uh. I would prefer to see more of Montgomery Avenue, uh, removed from the, uh, from the district. Montgomery Avenue is kind of a mishmash of strip malls and, uh, there are a few older houses there, but they're. Apart from the, the Price House, which is obviously, um, historical and some of the other houses are, are very out of character and just don't. You know, we talk about, the, the reason why we're drawing this up in 1945 is because it's a. You know, it's, it's, it's a train centered development. Well, Montgomery Avenue is a, is a road centered development and some of these older houses just. Relatively old houses don't fit in very well, so I, I think.
So this is the map we're working on, maybe it's easier to see that.
Hold on, just one, just one second. Fred, you're saying you, you would like to see more carve out. Right, you're, you're fine with the 1945 map, you just, there are certain properties on Montgomery Avenue. You're wondering why they are included.
Yeah, there's that little, there's, um. There's like three stretches, one of them is the, is the Price House, and then the other two, I think are. I don't know, surrounded by strip malls and.
Um, well, so, Mr. Bressi, maybe you could walk us down Montgomery Avenue from the northwest. Uh, on the way that you have the map rotated now. And, and, or from the west and walk us east and talk us through the different sections which are included.
Okay, um, may I ask if, uh, Dave Brower could do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, and I'll, I'll preface this by saying, um. Except in, in just a, a couple of, of, uh, exceptions. The, the map that you see before you with the, uh, properties colored in in red is non-contributing. We used the, the date of construction as, as the determinant, anything after. Anything after December 31st, 1945 is considered non-contributing. In the map as it stands now, there are only two cases in which buildings that were built before 1945 were considered a non-contributing, and that was because, you know, in this point in the process, we made a determination that there were so many exterior alterations made that the integrity of the, of the exterior appearance was so changed that, that they couldn't be considered non-contributing. Now, I think what, what Fred is, is alluding to in his comments is that there are similar buildings along Montgomery Avenue that have been so altered. And I'm thinking primarily several of the, of the houses that have had storefronts attached to them and had other exterior alterations, maybe.
Mr. Bressi, could you, could you move your mouse to point to those, just so everyone can see?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of where Iona Avenue is.
Yeah, I think one of those is Narberth Beverage.
Yes, that's the corner building, and there are several others. I might note in passing, there are, there are a few of those houses that, that in fact retain a fairly high degree of their original integrity, and, and we may not want to have as non-contributing.
May I ask a point, a point of clarification, just really quickly? I don't mean, I don't want to interrupt. I just, I'm not sure I know, I understand this, right? The dotted and dashed line, the border of the historic district, has that been drawn exclusively on the basis of date? Just the dotted and dashed bordered line? Okay, so nothing, that, that is not trying to leave out anything that's not, that's potentially older but non-contributing. It's just a date border, and I think that's all we're voting on. And the work on, in terms of determining on a one-by-one, case-by-case basis, what might be non-contributing is, is something that will happen after this map is approved. Is that, is that, is my understanding of that correct? I just want to make sure that it is.
Yes.
Go ahead and finish where you were going there, Dave.
So I, I was just making the point that, that a determination may be made that additional properties not shown on this map could be considered not contributing and, and accordingly colored in. When, when we did the map as it stands now, we took that whole row of once residential buildings that we were just discussing just to the southeast of Iona, and we left them all as contributing. But, and I, and I'm not sure to tell you the truth, you know, what kind of a review process we do to kind of, you know, really, as, as was mentioned, deep dive into each one to determine its status, but, but I, I don't see there's any reason why additional properties can't be included in the non-contributing category.
Mr. Bush, does that address your concern or answer your question?
Well, I mean, I, I look at, there may be some of these houses that if you look at them architecturally, they maintain their character, but they're still, you know, small houses surrounded by strip malls on a major commercial road, so I just don't know whether that's where we want to have a, you know, where we, I don't know if we want to have our protected district extend that far. I think that those.
I guess the question is, if you're using date as a criteria, right? Barring any sort of specific detail for that property, right, because it has to be evenly applied, it may, would fall under the ordinance, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor or Mr. Bressi, the owner of that property could propose to demolish it, and a future council and Harb could, could agree that, you know, given its location and the, the way that area is used, that, that that would be acceptable.
And that's also assuming that it is eventually named as a contributing resource.
Right, there is still the possibility, right, to Mr. Bressi's point, that the ones that you're pointing out, Fred, would be labeled non-contributing upon further review.
I mean, I'm just going to propose that we, we slice that area off of the map, and we say, well, this is no longer relevant to the train suburb story that we're telling, because now it is, you know, part of a, a strip mall suburb, you know, major street surrounded by parking lots. I mean, it's just, it's not, yeah, so I would just propose that we, we move the dotted line.
How does that, how does that work legally?
You end up excluding the Price House if you do that, Fred. I was thinking about that as well. Okay.
And remove the others.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we defer to the historic, the preservationist PhD who drew this map as council members, and then we wait for Planning Commission to do its more deep dive, sort of granular work in the future of, of looking at the buildings one by one for whether they're contributing or not. I don't think we're really competent to make these decisions here as a council, to be honest with you.
Other council member thoughts on that issue?
I tend to agree with that point of view, because, you know, the more I, it's, this group has done a lot of thinking about that, that boundary. And I think, given the fact that they haven't fully settled on what's non-contributing, it may, it may address these questions that we have, and they do.
The boundary is entirely numerical, right? I mean, they just drew it based on what the numbers were, which is not what I thought they were going to do when we were originally talking about this. So they haven't really exercised discretion in, in any way. Other, I mean, they're, they're applying a mechanical rule, and I'm saying, I, I think it breaks down there, I think. And, you know, before we protect these for eternity.
You're pointing, you're pointing to the question I've been having here, Fred, all along, which is, like, why not just include the entire border of the borough? And then just spread in all the buildings that don't contribute by date? I mean, you know, that are non-contributing, which, rather than carving up, you know, this funny puzzle piece picture. Anyway, that was my original understanding too, it was just the whole, the whole borough would be included, and then there would be non-included, but, but I, I'm in favor of this, this map, and I second what Michelle said about leaving this be.
Mr. Walco, or, or Mr. Bressi, is there a legal reason that we, that the Planning Commission and Historic Society or Historic Commission are choosing this approach that, that sort of fall in conflict with Mr. Bush's suggestion?
And I would defer to the preservationist who's writing the historic intent description. But ultimately, this entire ordinance and this map needs to be approved by the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission. And I think that if they look at this map and say, well, this doesn't make sense from a historical perspective, they would, and they decide not to approve, then we would be going back to drawing. I could be wrong on that, but, so it's not a, a legal, could be challenged at a future date. It's just more of a matter of, will it be approved?
Any other comments from Planning Commission members? Go ahead, Mr. Bressi.
Yes, thank you. Would it be appropriate, could I ask if we could ask Kathleen Altonout to speak to this? She has been.
Be great.
She has been talking with Cory about the map and the, the, the way the state looks at how maps are drawn. Kathleen also has, has written kind of statement which defines the intent of the district as well. So Kathleen, would you mind answering the question of how the boundary, the logic behind how the boundary was drawn, and the logic behind potentially removing these buildings from the boundary?
Oh, sure, Todd. I guess first I would address Councilperson Bush's question about some of the resources on Montgomery Avenue. If you look at the top of the map, the northwest section, the areas that are drawn in there are what would have historically been part of the original settlement of Narberth, which was called Libertyville, and there are about six or seven buildings of the, you know, original 12 or so. So it's actually a pretty intact collection of early resources that represents Narberth's beginning. When you move down the map to the east toward, toward this, the commercial area, the, the group tasked with creating this map did have a discussion about the houses along Montgomery Avenue. Todd, thanks. And whether they should be contributing or not. They have lost a large degree of their historic context, but if, at least a few retain a really high level of integrity. If you were looking at them just based on integrity, you know, you might, you might draw them out, but our, our consultant at the state has advised us that there is nothing in our ordinance that references integrity. It's not like a national register nomination. We're not going through and vetting, you know, the integrity of every one of these buildings on a scale of one to 10. As Dave had noted, there are some buildings, a very few number of buildings, that the group decided ought to be non-contributing based on the fact that they had lost so much of their integrity that they could not convey their association with the, with the, the period of significance or, or the, the character as it's defined in the narrative. So I think that, as Dave Sausa suggested, that this, this map is not the final map, I think that, that Borough Council will be seeing. There are some refinements, and as a group, I think that we'll be taking a really, really close look, we will have to, at every single one of these resources to make a solid determination about whether, you know, they, they ought to be contributing resources. And so, you know, the, these, these buildings would, would obviously, you know, fall into that, that camp of buildings that we'd be looking at. Some, some, you know, they do retain their, the level of integrity that many of the other buildings in the borough have. They've been changed to some degree, but they have lost a, a degree of context that many of the more interior buildings have not lost. And then in terms of why we didn't just draw a border around the entire district, our, our consultant at PHMC advised us a, a way against doing that. He said that it was important to distinguish, you know, large, larger concentrations of resources that could be pulled out, so as not to cause, you know, confusion about why they're actually in a historic district when they, when they don't contribute at all, and also because they're kind of islands outside of the, the district resources that, that do count as contributing. So that was kind of the advice that we went on, understanding, of course, the argument that could have been made, that the entire district or the entire borough could have been drawn into the district. I, I think that we could have done that. That was an option, but it was not the best option, according to our consultant at PHMC. So if that addresses or answers your questions, you know, I can stop there, or I can attempt to answer other questions.
Any further council member questions or discussion on this, on the map or its method of creation? Okay, I had, before we got into this, I had asked, I had put on the table that we use this map and asked if there was any dissent. Is there any other dissent to use the map, Proposed Historic District through 1945? So, so the motion on the table to advertise this ordinance, Mr. Walco, to summarize, would include the map from 1945, as the map council chooses. It would include letting the Harb and council be informed when there's been a demolition by neglect, and it would include also informing the Harb whenever staff approves a technical review that would not require them to make a decision. Are there any other outstanding items on which you think council needs to make a decision before voting yea or nay to advertise?
No, not of substance, Mr. President. There were a couple additional comments and inclusions that Mr. Bressi provided today to me. I don't have issues with those. I don't think they're worth bringing to council's attention, as it's moving around provisions, making sure it reads a little bit easier.
Okay.
Nothing of substance.
So all in favor of advertising, we can stop the screen share, so then we can see all of this. Thank you. All in favor of advertising the historic district ordinance with the text provided with the provisos as we just discussed? Please say aye. All right. Any opposed? None. Okay, we'll move to 7A. Ms. Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So as provided in your packet, I did have a report for a council. You know, it's similar to a format I had used previously. I certainly welcome if council wants any changes to the format to work better for you, because that is ultimately the point of this report. I'm certainly open to adding any items or making changes that you wish. I don't know if you, if you all want me to read it, or if I can just take any questions on it, however you prefer to address that, because again, ultimately, the report is for your benefit.
Council members?
My only question is, I, I appreciate this report first of all very much. This is really helpful, and it's very, very clear. I wondered how this will be communicated to the, to the community, if these are the plans that we're moving forward with for reopening buildings and such forth.
Oh, yeah, yes, thank you for bringing that up. So what I would like to do is use the, you know, existing Borough Electronic Communication Distribution to let residents know that it's my intent to move the Borough Office to being open, you know, half of the day in the mornings, starting on Monday, and then ultimately with a full reopening later on this summer. So that would be my intention with that, as well as updated signage will be posted on the, both front, both entry doors to the Borough Office.
Okay. Ms. Rickards?
Samantha, is there any place on the webpage that you could just kind of single out these reports? This is new, and it's, this is really such a nice just summary of what council is doing and what the office is doing. And in the past, community members have said, you know, we're not sure, if we can't go to all the meetings, and we don't look at the agendas. I, I don't know if other council members felt the same. I thought this was such an easy summary for folks, and I do wonder if it warrants just kind of its own information page, so folks could easily access it.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to, to doing that. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other council member questions on this plan? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else in your report?
I don't know if this is more appropriate for new business. I did note on the report, per the notification that the Borough Solicitor provided to council, we probably need to have some sort of discussion about how meetings will be conducted after tonight. But I don't know if that's more appropriate for new business.
No, I think now is a good time, as you are the organizer of these, of these meetings. Mr. Walco, it seems like we need to return to meeting in person with a quorum of council members physically present for our July meeting. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
That is correct. Due to the legislation's actions over Governor's extension, and due to the certification of those election results, council does unfortunately need to move quicker than we originally intended when that extension was granted to a meeting. The Borough Code does require there to be a quorum physically present in order for a public meeting to occur. There is language also in the Borough Code that gives excuses for telecommunication purposes. A lot of those are family vacations, business, health concerns. I would define that as broad enough that if people are concerned about COVID transmissions, that it would fall under that for the time being. So i- if council wanted to continue to have a Zoom option, council could, could have that. But one of those Zoom squares would need to be the room where four of you are, at least four of you are in, in that meeting. And, and still have the ability for the public to come into that meeting physically as well.
So I'd like to exercise presidential. So I'd like to, um, exercise presidential, uh, prerogative here and take the recommendation of our borough manager, which is that we will meet in person. And those council members present will have, uh, kickstands, um, for them to operate Zoom from their phones, so we cannot have one Zoom that has a room full of people where nobody can hear. And, um, we will try our best to continue, um, this kind of level of access for members of the public. And if there are any council members or experts who, um, feel this is the most expedient way for them to attend. And we'll see how, where it goes over the next few months, uh, how we, where this, uh, pandemic goes as well as, um, you know, where, where our meeting style trends and what can be most effective for getting our actions and deliberations out into the community. So, uh, with that, everyone's going to have to, uh, you know, no, no, no one here is, go ahead, Ms. Bryant.
A, a clarifying question for the borough solicitor, and if this is something we should talk about offline, um, definitely let me know. Um, when you mentioned having, uh, one of the screens dedicated to a view of like the entire room and the entire council, if every council, if every participant in the meeting had their own Zoom screen, and if a Zoom screen was provided for members of the public when they're speaking, would the borough still need to provide an overall route, uh, view of the entire room or just as long as we're capturing every individual, uh, participating in the meeting?
No, that, that, that would be sufficient. Um, again, it, it's just, the requirement is that both parties can, uh, interact, hear and speak, uh, go both ways. Uh, there would need to be a way of seeing anything that's presented within that room uh, to the public, but apart from that, no, a- as you described, uh, Bryant, that would work fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, anything else in your report, Ms. Bryant? No? Okay, well, Mr. Solicitor, your report.
As council made, I've cleaned on, I have been working on the, uh, rest of the district ordinance, uh, for last week or so. Uh, it, it, as Mr. Bressi said, it's been a great team experience sort of pulling this together. And obviously it's something that's still in motion and moving forward. Uh, in addition to that, I have been moving forward and, and working on the stormwater rehaul ordinance, and I apologize to council and particularly for Mr. Bush, who I know has been, uh, following up on this, but, uh, that is a slow tedious process to try to get that, uh, in line. I do anticipate next week I'll be in a position where I can have some more detailed, uh, conversations with Mr. Johnson and Tony in their office regarding some of the, uh, revisions that need to be made in order to, uh, be compliant with the MS four uh, and to, uh, have some more, some techni- technical eyes put on that. But I'm hoping again, before council meeting, that there will at least be a draft uh, of, of, of that, um, council consideration. Uh, so coming down the road is also the Salvo revisions. There have been some early versions of that. I know that staff has been looking into, to reviewing those. I have not dived into that as well. Um, so essentially a lot of, a lot of ordinances, um, taking up most of my work, uh, for the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Monthly reports have been filed. Any comments for the good of council? Well, I will say that, um, uh, due to, I'll just reinforce, due to the uncertainty related to the pandemic and when things would be reopening, it is unfortunate that we will not have um, our classic, uh, Fourth of July celebration this year, and we will not have fireworks in the borough this year on July fourth, but I am very excited for the volunteer spirit that I have seen coming out of the woodwork um, to work with the Narberth Business Association, um, to form a new group that will, um, bring many of those traditions back to the borough for, um, fireworks that will be long anticipated for July fourth, twenty twenty-two, as well as some fantastic and great activities for children and adults alike. I'll move to agenda item eight, new business. Is there any new business? Hearing none? Old business?
I would just like to mention that, um, just, uh, bringing, resuscitating, uh, uh, Parking Study Task Force, um, that, uh, you were from the winter. They did some great work and we are planning at this point for Matt Hopack from Montgomery County Planning, uh, to present the findings of the task force and hopefully many of the task force members will be present as well, will be in person, which will be nice. And so if you have any thoughts, uh, that you've been sort of not mentioning, that you'd like to sort of have addressed in that presentation, make sure maybe send them my way. And, uh, I'll make sure that Matt is aware of them and that he can, uh, be ready to be prepared to address any, any questions that council members are going to have.
Thank you for, um, stewarding that. And, um, I, we are very pleased now that we are re-staffing our professional office, that we can keep this moving forward. Um, it is, uh, it's something we've been working on for, what, five, five years now. So nice to see it coming across the finish line of sorts. Um, we have an executive session. Um, Ms. Bryant or Mr. Walco, do any of these executive session matters anticipate us coming back into public session to make a vote or a public decision?
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Walco.
Not, not, not I'm aware of.
Okay, so I will take, uh, a motion for adjournment and then we will recess into executive session to discuss personnel and property matters.
I move adjourned tonight's mo- meeting.
It's our second, seconded by Mr. McGreevy. All in favor? Aye, the meeting is adjourned. We will excuse the public and we will go into executive session. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Good night, Mr. Johnson.